Ash is there, and Morrie is there. I see what that is, the last read, so above that line, those people aren't really here. It just gives the impression that they're here. So I think how that must work then, Leanne, that must be the last team meeting you hold. The streaming that Garrett Simmons, our communications officer, is facilitating. So certainly welcome to anyone who is doing that. And what I meant, I think what I'll start with is just sort of turning out a quick intro and maybe purpose of this session, since it came, this idea came from parents, over to Alison Priscilla-Pike, who is our, that's for school division, division school council chair, I think I got that right.
Too many words, Alison.
Too many words, there we go.
So there's definitely been a lot of questions from parents about how decisions are made during this COVID time. And in talking with Cheryl and Alison when we met to plan some of the learning sessions for the next year, we talked about that this first session would be great to have Cheryl as well as other division staff present some information, and rest to be able to ask questions that we might have. One thing is there's a lot of information that they plan to cover this evening, so it's really important that if you have a question, that we keep it short and succinct. I believe they can email those questions into Leanne, and that information is available. Leanne, you can put your email address in the chat room, so that you can easily email her if you have questions to ask. There's not going to be an opportunity for great big discussions or anything, because there is a lot of information that we want to cover, and we want to be able to get information out to parents about how decisions are made and how everything is happening around our division with AHS and Alberta Health Services. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Cheryl.
Yeah, and for those who are just watching and not on Teams, how would they ask a question if they would like to?
Email as well.
Email, yeah.
Email as well. And is that, is that, how do they find that, if they're watching?
It's right on the website.
It's right on the website, right. So anyone who's watching using the connection to stream, the live feed, the information for emailing, if you have a question at the end of the presentation or during the presentation, it's helpful if you email them during. It could be in my relative to what we're talking about. You can do so, and certainly as well, Leanne has just put an email in the chat box there for those who are on Teams, so that you can see where you would email your questions. And then we'll try to save some time at the end and make sure that we address all of those questions. And so I invited Morrie Gass with Instructional Services Associate Superintendent. Morrie really leads a lot of the, most of the collaboration piece with Alberta Health Services. She takes the lead on how things proceed with respect to communication between Alberta Health Services and the schools, and it's that link in terms of getting information back and forth and staying apprised of anything new with Alberta Health Services. And so what Morrie are going to do is walk her way through a PowerPoint with a lot of information. And this PowerPoint will be put on the website, or is, I believe it is on the website. So if you're streaming this, we can't see this very well. This is available on the website, you can follow along that way should you wish to do so. So I'm going to have Morrie start in a minute. First, I'll talk about what we will be covering. So the topics really, from my understanding, from the feedback from parents, when they were deciding on what are some learning topics that we would like to pursue as a division school council, they said, you know, really, some of us are a little confused about how does decision making work? What decisions do Alberta Health Services make? And how do those decisions get communicated to schools? And how do schools make those decisions knowing the parents? And so we're going to, Morrie will lead us through sort of how those decisions are made all the way from the new screening tool effective today to what happens when there's a COVID positive test, full contact isolation, and so forth, and the communication roles that Alberta Health Services has and that the school division has. I'll talk a little bit about protocols, and then we'll close with that and with questions. And so there is a lot of information, and we didn't make assumptions about people, you know, necessarily knowing a lot. And because there's a new screening tool, we thought we would start with that, because it is a little long and seems a little confusing for parents. So we'll, and again, we'll have this on our website, so you can navigate through that. So Morrie, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great, thanks so much, Cheryl. And thank you, everybody who's there, and people who are also online, like me. Ironically, the person who does quite a bit of the quarterbacking with COVID at the school division office today got unplugged there. Sorry, I got unplugged there. And my son as well, we had nausea, so airplane.
You might have unplugged yourself, Morrie, we can't hear you.
I'm here, I apologize, I got unplugged. There we go, not only do I possibly have a bug, but I also can't hurt my computer properly. I apologize, anyway. Can you hear me okay, guys?
We can.
Perfect, thank you. And so where I was at here was just really the realities around the challenges that we've experienced maneuvering and working through COVID and all the fun things that have presented. You know, the pieces that we've often spoken about with our staff are just the fluidity of the situation, given that research is ongoing. We've only had this virus in our, in our experience for a very short period of time, unlike measles, for example, where we have 52, something five years of experience. And so as we continue to move through this, the health professionals get more information and provide us with more information that will change our practices so that we can respond in the best way possible. And so, you know, fluidity and flexibility for me are the two words that kind of keep me held together and Cheryl together right now. And this screening tool is one more example of that reality of having to be flexible and having to maneuver. I think this is our fourth one now, Cheryl?
It is.
Yeah, our fourth screening tool since we started the school year. So, you know, you say end of August, September, October, just into November, so in two months. And, you know, at the best of times, our schools don't like rapid change. They like routine, and they like things that are easy to predict and easy expectations. And something as simple as a screening tool, when we have to change our practices from week to week, obviously, it presents challenges for our staff, but then also our parents. So just, you know, trusting in the fact that we really are doing our best to respond quickly and appropriately, and then follow the guidance of Alberta Health Services as we move through this together. So the new screening tool that did come out to us on Friday is a heads up for November 2nd, so today, did present differently. It separated into three sections. The first section is sort of more cut and dry, and it addresses the reality of travel. And then this one, really not as much change as the other sections. And, you know, I think we all know now, many of us aren't traveling outside of Canada, but we do know that if you do go outside of Canada, you do need to be prepared to quarantine. And essentially, the guidance in the gray provides us with that continued direction of what we need to do when this happens. Of course, they narrowed it down, it comes to have you traveled outside Canada in the last 14 days, and have you had close contact with a case of COVID in the last 14 days? And those are very simple questions to respond to. It's when we get to section two and three that's a little more complicated. So if we could go over to the next piece. So in this section, we've now seen the core four is what Alberta Health Services likes to call them. And the core four have changed. We did have about 10 symptoms that they had initially identified that we needed to be monitoring and managing in our schools and sending home if children were identifying that they weren't feeling well. And so now we've got down to four concerning or core symptoms that Alberta Health Services has identified that we need to really be heightened around. And so if the child answers yes to any of these symptoms in question two, they have to isolate for 10 days. And then, of course, going on to the AHS online assessment tool for additional guidance and possible isolation to proceed, right? And so if your child does have fever, cough, shortness of breath, or sense, loss of sense of smell or taste, those definitely are concerning issues, and they do need to isolate for 10 days from the onset of symptoms. Going to section three. This is where it does get a little trickier to stick handle, because as we have found in the first two months of our school year, many of us have pre-existing conditions that present on a day-to-day basis, ID, allergies, anxiety, when we can't sleep well, upset tummy from something bad that we've eaten. There's lots of other pre-existing conditions that also present with these symptoms. Unfortunately, these have been identified as secondary symptoms, not the core four that Alberta Health Services has identified. But if the child identifies, now this is where it gets tricky, one of these symptoms, they should stay home, the child should stay home, and the parents should monitor them for 24 hours. So for example, today with my nausea and my headache, I'm staying home, I'm checking on how I'm doing for the next little bit here, and if I'm feeling better, then I will return because I've got the headache and nausea. Now, if I actually have two of these symptoms, we proceed to the next section here where they again should stay at home. Whenever we have any symptoms, we're not feeling well, we should not be going to school. But we can go to the AHS online assessment tool, or call Health Link, if it is recommended. Again, if the symptoms go away, we're good. But if you do have an assessment or a COVID test, you should be waiting until you receive those results to return, and as long as your symptoms have, well, minimized or gone away. So the difference here is the one symptom and the two symptom qualifier. So if it's a one symptom, they're saying monitor. They are saying with the two symptoms, monitor as well. But they do want you to, if you do feel that it's not going away, you do go get a COVID test to rule out that you do not have COVID. So right here, this was the past screening tool, so a comparison, sorry, this is the tool for the adult.
No, Morrie, I put that one in there because that's the adult screening tool, right? Just wanted them to see that there was a difference between the adult one and the one for 18 and under, yeah.
Got it.
So this is one of the ones that uses your children.
Was this one done just recently as well, Cheryl?
Yes, Morrie, I got them both on Sunday.
Okay.
Yeah, so yesterday, yeah.
And so here, they do seem to stick to different core four than the students, right? And so we just need to be mindful that we're using the screening tool that has been identified that I just went through for your children, not the adult one that's presenting here.
Right. And that's where it does get confusing, because actually, and that's why I thought I should put it up here, because when I looked yesterday, when I was putting the PowerPoint up, I thought, well, that's not the same or, it's on the children's. I noticed that right away, so I thought, well, we should put that up so people can see and not get confused by the fact that there's an adult one and there's a children.
So staff use that adult one?
Yes, yeah.
So here, this is the link, Cheryl, you said that it is live now, huh?
On Sunday, but it is now, I just tried it, and yes, it's backed up, and it looks different than it looked before Friday, on Friday, and it's different today. But it looks clearer today, Morrie, actually. And so I think it will end up being, well, once you give it though, okay, we'll have Garrett Simmons put it up on our website. And because it looks like a pretty straight, this looks easier than the checklist, actually, in terms of a parent navigating how long to stay home from school, right? Rather than the checklist, once the child is at home, they can look at this and go, oh, okay, that's what the rules are in terms of how long I have to keep my child at home. So we'll get that up once, Morrie, except just to look at it and give you, go ahead.
Okay, sounds good. I just got a text from Pam, and she wants me to give her a call, so I'll have to fire through this quite quickly, Cheryl.
All right, or I can keep going, Morrie, if you need to go give Pam a call.
Um, let's just, I'll be here for another five minutes, so I'm good with that.
Okay.
So there has been some concern, and it's about understanding symptomatic versus asymptomatic for our people who've tested COVID positive in our schools. And so we work very closely with Alberta Health Services when we learn about a student or a staff member that has identified as COVID positive, because sometimes they may not have been symptomatic at school. And so this is the piece that we have to be very cautious with, with communication. And of course, Lethbridge being a very close community, they find out when Jane or Henry got COVID, and sometimes there are misperceptions out there around, oh, there might have been a COVID case in school. So we really have to be clear and discuss with Alberta Health Services, is it a community contact, or is it an in-school contact? And then were they symptomatic or were they asymptomatic in school? And so if students were asymptomatic at school, or weren't in school, or it was the weekend when they were symptomatic, we may not always have a positive test and have to do a close contact mapping that we have to go through when we do have a positive test. So it's very important for parents and for our adults in our buildings to understand the difference between symptomatic and asymptomatic, and how that impacts our close contact mapping. If students develop at school, students asked to wear a non-medical mask, they're isolated in a separate room, typically the infirmary, and then parents were, oh, we'll be contacted to pick up the child immediately. That sometimes can be very difficult, and we do appreciate, respect the challenges, parents. I was one of them today, where I had to stop drop and roll and get my son, right? And that is one of the difficult realities for our parents this year as we maneuver this reality for ourselves. So classmates in close contacts, once we have a COVID positive test, we immediately embark upon a close contact mapping process. And that happens at the school level, I have very little to do with that. I do, I coach and I observe, but really, our principals know best how to map out the close contacts with Alberta Health Services. And really, any classroom that has a positive case, if you have been in that classroom for 15 minutes or longer with that positive case, you are then identified as a close contact, because we can't necessarily ensure that there hasn't been a change in that two-meter distance. We know that that right simply is not possible always in our classrooms. And then as well, the coughing, sneezing piece, we aren't always able to determine whether or not that has happened. And so ultimately, that's how we do have to respond to a close contact mapping process. I think that essentially covers it there. Household members, this is a big question that we often get from parents and other community members, where if a student is either a close contact and has to go home, is everybody in that house all of a sudden a close contact? The answer is no, because that, those other people did not come into close contact with that COVID positive case. And so the only way that you would be in quarantine or directed to quarantine or self-isolate is if you have been identified by Alberta Health Services as a close contact via a letter that comes out from the school, but it is from Alberta Health Services. So that's an important one for household members. It's probably wise to maintain your distance from your family members and try and keep them as isolated as you can in your house. We also recognize that that's not always a reality, some houses are bigger than others, and some houses have multi-generational families, where quite honestly, isolation just isn't possible. And so we recognize that families and parents do their best to ensure that their individual that's been identified as a close contact is as safe as possible, and so are the other family members. So returning to school after an illness, again, following that screening tool, we have noticed that the new screening tool is more kind for people who have those secondary symptoms, where wait 24 hours. If you see that those subside, then indeed you could return as long as you're feeling well enough to learn. Pre-existing medical conditions, I really have to give kudos to parents. They've been so patient, as our schools have really learned about their child health-wise, whether it's asthma, or allergies, or various conditions that have really made it difficult as we initially had a very tight screening tool. But as the screening tool has loosened, I think the conversations have been a lot more easy, and parents have been very open in sharing the challenges their children have with pre-existing conditions, so that we can support as necessary. So if there is a case of COVID-19 at school, again, it depends on who the individual is and where that individual was, and what classrooms they may have impacted, and when they were symptomatic or asymptomatic. Again, we move through a progression of alert to outbreak to watch. And alert is a first time, and outbreak is two or more, and then a watch is five or more. And so as we work through the process, and I initiate from Alberta Health Services an activation email to our principals, the principals then roll up their sleeves and call Alberta Health Services and say, okay, I know you can't tell me who the person is, but can you tell me what sections, cohorts, or grades have been impacted? So we can do that mapping process as well. We have the wonderful challenge of working through busing sometimes if a student is a busing student, so we have to do that mapping process as well. From there, the Alberta Health Services team does prepare the close contact letter that's sent out via school messenger by our schools. We realize very quickly that that is much more expeditious than Alberta Health Services quarterbacking that, because we have all of that communication at our fingertips. And as well, our wonderful Garrett Simmons, our communication officer, has put together the alert, outbreak, and watch community letters that go out to our schools. And I think now we have, 60% of our schools have had at least an alert, so they might, you might have seen those parents. But those go out, and then very quickly after, a close contact letter goes out. So if you haven't seen a close contact letter, then you can rule your child out of being identified as a close contact.
Can we ask questions?
Do we?
Am I, am I going too quickly?
I don't think, no, we'll just pause there, I'm going to back up again. We'll pause there and see what, how is Alberta Health Services doing in terms of being patient to wait for you to call them back, how we doing? You good?
Alberta Health Services has been amazing, is that a question for me, Cheryl?
No, no, I'm just saying, how are we for time? Because I know you said that Pamela's on the phone for you.
Yeah, I spent five minutes.
Okay, so let's make a few questions, Alison.
So I just have a question, Morrie. I know a lot of parents, when they get the email that says if they're going to get contact, they'll get contact sometime this evening, or within, you know, it's typically the end of whatever point. I'm wondering, I know that you can't nail anything down with AHS as to a specific time, but a lot of parents are concerned, like, do they need to wait up past 10 o'clock at night? Or do they need to wait till midnight? Or what point should they expect that they're going to get something in the evening that they need to be making plans for the following day?
That's such a great question, Alison, and I think, you know, just like our principals probably are asleep by 11 o'clock, and I, one thing I've become definitely more aware of this year than ever before is that we're a system of human beings, right? And we recognize that in order for many parents to make a decision on childcare, or whatever the case may be, within eight hours is a huge struggle, right? We have been very fortunate, and I think the team down in the south from Alberta Health Services is very thoughtful that they want to get information at latest six or seven o'clock to us, so that we can ensure that that gets out to parents for the next day. That being said, Alison, you're absolutely right, we can't always control things. And I know Pam Hodgkinson works till 11 o'clock at night. We had our first one, it was at 11 o'clock at night. But I think since then, we've endeavored to try and get things done earlier in the day, especially the school cases are a priority for Alberta Health Services earlier in the day, because I think they realize that it just becomes a drub parenting and trying to line up childcare is such a difficult one, right? So the intention is definitely there to get it done sooner than later. I know our principals, if they get a notification at seven o'clock at night, they end up coming back into school to send out that community letter and that close contact letter very closely together. I know that's one thing we have really tried to shoot for is, you know, within 15 minutes, once that community letter goes out, the close contact letter goes out. So if there is one piece we can guarantee, is that once that, the community letter goes out within an hour, the close contact letter will go out.
Is that something, Morrie, that could be put in that, that community, the first letter that goes out is that, you know, within an hour you would receive contact? Rather than wondering all evening when they're going to get a contact or not?
We can do that, but there are some challenges with that, Alison, in that as we move through a situation, if we do our first close contact letter, and then we find that the student is on a different bus or has had further connection with some other group, then there are other additions to that. And so I don't often want to keep a false promise, but I think we can say that we will endeavor to ensure we send our close contact list within the hour, notwithstanding the fact that as we progress through a situation, other close contacts might be idled or fired.
Okay, that's fair. Yeah, I know that Morrie and Garrett work really hard to time the community letter, the alert letter, or the outbreak letter, most of the whole community, it's sort of back-to-back almost with the close contact letter, right? So that parents aren't fretting all night. And so, and there's been, there has been a rare occasion where that's not perfect, right? And there has been a rare occasion where schools have had to catch students as they're coming to school. Like, I mean, there's been those, but for the most part, I, when I was at a meeting and listened to some of the stories around the province in terms of what it looks like between Alberta Health Services and the school jurisdictions, I have to say, we're an amazing Alberta Health Services zone. We've got some great communication from Alberta Health Services, timely response from them. And of course, because we're willing to put out those letters, because we've got the communication system, parents get them much more timely than that. There's some areas in this province where school jurisdictions are not wanting to send out that communication, take responsibility for that. So your child and parents are waiting 24, 48, like three, four days, right? Where, because we're working together, that's typically pretty quick, right? Now, that's so far, and it's hard to say, of course, in terms of numbers and cases, but certainly, as Morrie has mentioned, Pam, Pamela Hodgkinson, Alberta Health Services, oh my goodness, I don't know if she speaks at all, but certainly, they've been really amazing with the communication. So, all right, sorry, guys, should we keep going? Any other questions right now? So Morrie can finish and go phone Pamela, which means Morrie gives thumbs up. Go get four communication for one.
I think it's just, this is the last one. We already talked about the sort of outbreak and watch qualification and criteria. There are questions around when there's a close contact letter, why do I have to quarantine for 14? And then why does someone with a positive COVID case only have to quarantine for 10? Really, the reality there is that in order for the symptoms to in order for the symptoms to roll out, we need the full fourteen still from Alberta Health Services. They've identified that that is what is required in that time when someone is identified as a close contact person. If they're positive, their symptoms are already presented, right? And so that was a question as well that I've often received and, and clarification has needed, has been sort of thought on that. Now, this stuff, um, yeah, I'll just quickly touch on this.
Yeah, you touched on, this is just sort of the recap of what, what is the school. Yeah.
Yeah, and so really, we pull up the attendance. Of course, there are challenges when we have kids who might have been away for two days when the, the con-, the, the positive COVID individual was there. And so, a whole class might be wiped out except for a couple of students who maybe weren't there while the positive case was symptomatic. And so, schools have really worked quite adeptly and swiftly at ensuring that programming can continue for students even if they might have either been impacted or not impacted by, um, a quarantine that has to be imposed on a classroom as well as the teachers. So, um, when we have a teacher who's been teaching and they're in a, they're mapped out as a close contact, they then as well are quarantined, but they might have students who still are in school. Um, so schools really do have to do some juggling around scheduling and ensuring that education continues. And, and of course, administrators have been outstanding at navigating what learning looks like for students in these situations.
And, and from there, I can talk about then what the schools do in terms of learning. Is there any last questions for Maury from, on the Alberta Health Services piece? Because I'll, I'll keep going now that Maury will work with Pamela. Uh, on, yes, we do, Tisha.
Um, just wondering if someone's asymptomatic this whole class is quarantined? Because she keeps talking about when symptoms occur, the class is quarantined. But what if they test positive but are still asymptomatic?
So Maury, Tisha's question, did you hear the question?
It, it's, if someone is asymptomatic but are positive?
Yes.
We would defer to Alberta Health Services to map that out and work with that individual in particular.
We, we, uh, we don't make any judgments at all about what is a close contact or what's asymptomatic or symptomatic. We, we, Alberta Health Services do that. Any other questions for Maury? Any other email I have?
Two questions on the email. I don't know specifically for Maury. Would you like me to show you?
Sure, yeah, let's see what they are. Yeah.
So I'm gonna stop presenting so that I can share my email instead.
Leanne, you're amazing. Do you know that? I just have to say, I don't know how you manage.
Well, I know, I've heard you have been so amazing for most of my meetings. But a lot of things, uh...
Yeah, not so amazing, but I can't get it to share with Maury.
I think you had your email out there.
I did, but it wasn't being shared.
Oh. Well, you could read it.
Why don't you just read them?
Well, and I can share with Cheryl and you can read them.
Okay.
So this is the first question. Can you provide a clear and concise answer as to why a three-day division staff retreat this fall, where social distancing was not possible, was considered responsible and essential?
I'm not...
I'm not aware of that. There wasn't a division, there wasn't a...
There wasn't a division staff retreat. We, for our division, um, admin learning days, we sort of split that up and invited people up and hosted it across different days. If this would have been any of the school, um, staff retreats, uh, this fall in August, um, in the days before students came to school, um, I'm not sure, um, it may have been that, there was activities where, um, social, of course, you have to remember with scenario one, social distancing is not a requirement. So social distancing is encouraged but not a requirement. Masking is encouraged. And if there were instances that those things happened, then certainly, those are worth discussion. But I can't respond to that in, in terms of a specific incident. But social distancing is not a requirement under scenario one. It's encouraged, um, and... So that's what social distancing.
Cheryl, if I could just interrupt too, because I think you know what the thing is. Well, it goes back to the fluidity and flexibility in learning as we progress through this situation. I do have to say, as a leader in the system, the guidance that I provide my team directly and even, you know, work with, with principals now is a different message from what we did even late August, early September. Um, I, I can't recall a three-day division retreat, to be honest. I, I wasn't a part of that. So I don't, I'm not sure about that situation. But, um, we did have an admin retreat, but we definitely maintained social distancing protocols while we did professional learning. Um, and I think all of the participants were very mindful that, um, it was important to have that learning opportunity. I think as we move forward though, um, we have changed our learning, our professional learning with administrators because we recognize that, um, we can't quite simply have all administrators out. And so we do a lot of teams meetings now and we have shifted many of the practices that I think early August, early September, when our numbers were lower, um, we perhaps were not as diligent or as fast as we are now. So, um, I, that would be my response at this juncture.
Thank you, Maury. For the other scan?
Maury, go. How's the division? Everyone can read it?
It's quiet right now. Are you just finding a question, Leanne?
It's all from the community. Oh, sorry, you can't, can't see it. It's kind of loud, so... So, Maury, uh, I'll, I'll read it to you. Another, it's a question from AlCI. Um, and it's an inclusive classroom question. I don't know, this isn't really one necessarily that has to do with what we're talking about tonight. It may be that this person might need to email you or talk to you personally. Leanne can always forward this to you, um, certainly, Maury, but I will read it to you. Oh, yeah, this is quite a long question and it's a complicated question. Not really necessarily related to what we're talking about right now. But it does have to do with whether or not the division has advised or mandated schools on inclusive classrooms related to the assignment of cohorts. So where the practice has been and best outcomes for certain students are achieved by having access to both regular and their learning support teachers, are those students now being confined to one classroom? So I guess to talk about, you know, how the practices regarding inclusive learning change, right? As an outcome of, uh, social distancing and masking and quarantining. And then an example of an AlCI student struggling with not being allowed to ever enter his regular classroom or options where he feels he belongs, high functioning and very social. Uh, parents feel the administration's been unwilling to discuss a better situation for the student. Would this be something that would be specific to a conversation at the school level, Maury?
So we, can we assume that if we have nothing by seven, eight AM the morning of, we are fine? Can we stick each time on the evening before? You know what, I, I really, is it Spencer or is it Locke?
It's Locke.
Yeah, I met you, I think, with Sharon Locke, didn't I, on time? Yeah, how are you doing?
Good, thanks.
So, but, you know, I...
So I'll, I'll notice that, just by saying thank you for everything that's happening. And I think the division is well organized to bring out all that communication. Just to follow up on the, the thread that was started is, you know, if there's a general guideline that parents can know about, I think that would be very helpful. If it's probably this time, if not, you know, this time, then you, you can stop worrying, right?
It's tricky, Locke, because like I mentioned earlier, I don't know if you came in a little later, but, um, the person who I work directly with in Alberta Health Services, Pam Hodgkinson, her call I might have to get to right away here. Um, she's working right now and so there might be a family, um, that has just been informed, uh, that they are positive right now. And so, I might have to embark upon a process with the school at this juncture, right? I think right now HS is working twenty-four seven and really trying to be expeditious. And I think the dilemma is when you're expeditious, it doesn't always fit into the timeline of a school schedule, right? Um, but I, I will continue to work with the team and see if we can come up with, you know, some kind of timed schedule that if we don't know anything, then we wait till the next day. But then we might be in a situation where we let close contacts come into a building the next day without informing them, right? And so that, therein lies the, the dilemma that, um, we always, well, and it's the reason why I think the South is doing such an amazing job. Um, in the North, where some of my colleagues are, they let Alberta Health Services do all the notification. And so the school hasn't been in, in close contact with that process. And sometimes they've had to wait up to four days to tell all of the close contacts that they are close contacts. And to me, that seems really irresponsible just in, in sort of the spirit of, um, you know, trying to be, informing at a time that's convenient purposes, informing at a time that's going to maintain the health and safety of our students and staff. So, great question. I can see what we can do. Um, and, and, you know, I'm always looking for creative ways to make it better for everybody. So, I appreciate that.
And I, I think how, how you've explained it, it is, I mean, even if that explanation was more broadly known, like, you know what? This is a twenty-four seven operation. We're doing as fast as we can. Apologies for inconveniences, but this is better in the long run. I mean, that, that's a perfect answer too.
Okay, appreciate that thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think, we've got it, Maury. Thank you and, uh, I look forward to not hearing from you today.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Because faces make their face.
And, and I will share with Pam, uh, you know, the outstanding work that they're doing over at Health Services, everybody. You know, I, I, uh, I'm always amazed at this woman and the team that we work with. They're so unhold and willing to please and, um, we're very fortunate in the South to have this partnership because, quite honestly, I don't think it exists anywhere else in the province. And, uh, you know, hopefully I don't have to contact you guys tonight with close contact letters. There you go.
Thanks, Maury. Have a good evening.
Thanks, you too.
Okay. And we bring up the, uh, part one is a few things about now what is the learning. I think we've got that back, uh, right?
Yes.
And so, so what happens at the school level? I know, and, and we're learning as we go as well and we're having to navigate as we go. And so, you know, if you were to ask me same thing as some of the health questions, if you were to our protocol questions, if you were to ask me two months ago, I wouldn't give a different answer than I give today because we're sort of navigating and learn as we go. So, um, school administrators, they have to sort of navigate that. We do our very best to help them. We've got increasing challenges with numbers of substitute teachers. We have increasing challenges with sort of the turnaround time. So just like parents, if they get notification at the last minute, we might get notification at the last minute of staff members as well. So, we do our very best to be as nimble and flexible as we can. So at all levels, so I'm gonna work through a few scenarios and, and again, regarding as we go. At all levels, the teacher in class, so the scenario, the teacher and the class are quarantined. So it's a grade two class at, uh, one of our elementary schools and it's the teacher and all of those students quarantined. We know because we've been working really hard with their teachers to do at-home learning, online learning, using Teams, um, that they have the proficiency and the technology and the ability to do that. And we've been working with teachers to work with their parents as best as possible. And you may have done some of that already. I don't know where you may have been contacted by your teachers. By the way, do you know what your son or daughter's username and password to get onto Teams? The, what we need to do, what we do do, of course, is the delivery of learning must continue. And so the way that happens when a teacher's quarantined with their class is that delivery of learning does continue online to Teams. Does it continue necessarily that very next day? Not necessarily. Sometimes depending upon how ready the teachers, how ready the students are, it can take a day or so to make sure that we put everybody up and running with their technology, our students, um, as well as our teachers. This usually happens, this happens really quick with high school. It is that day, right? High school is, is very fast because of course you've got students who are adept with technology. Middle school, we're finding, works pretty quick as well. Elementary there is, right? Because if we have grade four or five, we do the long roll. That looks different than if we have little ones who are becoming adult parents. And little ones may be home and not even necessarily with their parents, right? And so, um, it takes their teachers sometimes a few days to navigate what that will look like for children. And our goal being that learning will continue. And of course, I'm asking for patience as we endeavor to try to make that work for all families.
Is there access to devices for large families? Like, we have six kids there in school. I probably have three, maybe four devices that I could keep my kids going if all of them are home.
If all of them are, now, typically it would be all of them. Yeah, I couldn't say like, yes, right? Because other schools don't have that capacity. But I would just advise people to work with their schools, right? Would be the, the best answer I could give there. It's like, not always, not, 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 but anyways. Uh, what, what happens at the school? So if a teacher, what happens when a teacher's quarantined but not students? All right, because that happens. So for example, it might be because that teacher was a ped teacher, um, for, uh, three different classes in the school and one of those classes was quarantined and because that teacher was in that class for more than fifty minutes, they're quarantined, but yet their class is still in school. So then what we... We made the decision, we tried it out last week and it's worked pretty well. Um, was Churchill High School did this and Shunok High School has done this. Um, we have all, the high school teachers quarantined, all of their classes delivered using Teams online. Um, and regardless of whether their classes, students are quarantined or not, we have to count on those students being old enough and independent enough to access those classes online to Teams even if they, as students, are quarantined. And that's because those students have half-day classes, right? And so, um, and we're hopeful that students in thousands will work with schools if that's a barrier for students. The only way that, we had to think of some ways to preserve substitute teachers. So we want a substitute teacher sort of that priority to be at elementary level because it's not as if we can say, well, your teacher's quarantined, so now figure it out. Because that affects families, right? We're hopeful that the least, um, impact on families will be for high school students to get their delivery of learning from their high school teachers online. And just mentioned high school for years, those high school teachers want to do their own classes online rather than substitutes because it's so discipline-centered. If you're not, I don't mean management is less subject-centered. And those teachers are very interested in keeping those kids caught up and doing the delivery themselves. And so, um, at Churchill, Tracy Wong told me, the principal there, that it's, uh, went really well in terms of the staff really embracing that idea. All of her high school teachers said, yes, that's what we want to do. Um, she talked to a number of students. They were positive about that. And then she checked on some kids today because today was her first day of doing that and she felt that it went pretty well. That's not to say it's perfect. It will try to problem solve if there were any problems with kids and families. So, and I see here, there may be some exceptions where that's not possible or not the case. Grade K to nine, there's different scenarios depending upon the grade, class configuration, teacher's assignment. So some possibilities, maybe substitute teacher assumes all responsibilities. Maybe substitute teacher works in tandem with a quarantined teacher. So in other words, a quarantined teacher might be doing some of that delivery using Teams to the class of students in the school. Uh, quarantined teacher delivers some absorption online to the class in the school. Uh, might be a piece of that as well with administrative supervision and so forth, right? A lot of this, of course, we're learning as we go. It depends upon how many substitutes we get in the school on any given day because certainly, um, we've had experiences already where we haven't had enough substitute teachers. And so, we really have to start triaging in schools. When you triage, be independent and can't be independent, we can't leave our elementary students and say, your teacher's going to deliver this, um, Math thirty-one lesson online and I'm going to be checking on you. I mean, someone has to be with the elementary children. And so that's, that's what we put the priority. So what if a student is quarantined but not the teacher or they're not the class? So we've got that happening, right? Throughout the system. So what if a student is quarantined but not the teacher or the rest of the class, because certainly we've got that happening, right, throughout the system as well? So the teacher assumes responsibility for the student, and so the teacher will assume that responsibility. Right now, it's manageable for a teacher now. Again, we're learning as we go. Would that be manageable for a teacher if there's 20 students at home, right? And they had to try to deliver independently to each of those, and, and probably not then, what would happen is that class would probably have to get live stranger online to Teams, right? So there's no one answer to this. But the teacher and administrators, that helps the teacher navigate what that looks like. It might be prepared packages, it might be online streaming lessons, it might be a combination, it might be Teams, it might be streaming of the lessons from the school, and I've seen all of that happen. I've seen where the teacher just said, oh, it'll be easier if I just sort of livestreamed to my two students, because they were middle school-aged students at home, or for elementary, I'd be, no, I would rather just get some packages ready yours, so it just depends upon the circumstance of what happens there.
Questions?
So, questions, yes?
I'm wondering for the, where the teacher is quarantined, and it's the online learning for one class for high school. So we had the opportunity to experience that today.
Thank you.
And I'm wondering, knowing that it's a learn-as-we-go process, I'm wondering if there's any consideration next semester of changing the bell times? So the bell rang at, I think it's 11:09, and the next class starts at 11:11. So I think we could leave like a half-hour window, so that students either need to take the city bus, or they need to walk to school, or their parents need to drive them. There's not, they're going to be missing a core course at some point. So I think if, given that COVID's probably going to go on, I think that as a division, maybe we could look at having a half-hour break between those classes.
Thanks, you could actually.
Thank you, Alfred. I didn't know that. That makes good sense.
Like I said, because the high schools, as you know, try to have all of their schedules aligned.
Oh, for sure.
So that they could mix students for the online learning, and I know they tried to compress things, so that the students didn't have all this free time to cohort with us. Cohort in their cohorts with one another, and so, but yeah, they can't, they'd be missing some, it's about times. Anyone else experienced that so far?
My son said today that they did have a huge break in doing their classes.
Did they?
He said an hour, but I don't think that's true, and I don't know, it could be.
Maybe they've done that, and I don't know what, so that's about time, he said.
They're all learning in class, but he said they did allow for kids to come back and forth, and he mentioned the website and the buses.
Yeah.
Because he said transfers and stuff, it actually does take, it can take that long.
It can, yeah.
So, they must have talked about it, say, I don't know if it was on the announcements, or just.
Okay. So my first is to pay close attention to, right, have we given, and especially Berkeley, but really the burden on our older kids to be really independent here, right, and so we want to make sure.
And if it is that they're moving it to have a break, then let parents know, so that we cut off the morning class for the learning at home. So that you can.
Yes, parents need to know that.
Yes.
And the communication is parents, so. Thank you. So, again, we're learning as we go, we're trying, we're ready, of course, we have some different challenges. And again, we're, we triage in terms of, you know, having the substitutes allocations focused on elementary as much as possible. And Alberta Health Services, so a summary, Alberta Health Services, community, positive cases, they give a phone call, just like such, I think I'll text or call Maury or myself, who are both the primary contacts for Alberta Health Services, so we'll get a text or an email, and then they inform us of the school and the classes the jurisdiction provides, then we work with the principal, and as the principal goes in and provides attendance, passes the schedule. We're not given the name necessarily, right? Now, sometimes students will phone and say, hey, guess what, I, you know, and of course, the committee knows before we ever know, and that's always really interesting, right, because it's sort of out there across the whole committee, and we can't, so just, you know, we can't be putting anything out until Alberta Health Services, they take the lead. Alberta Health Services decide if it's what it is and if it's something, and so they, that we prepare, and it's a, it's a team mostly, it's Garrett Simmons and Maury working together with the principal and Alberta Health Services to get all of that information out. And then the school's sort of the ones that determine what delivery of learning will look like, and I already talked about that, every circumstance is different. We have no right, one right answer to that. We're learning as we go and, and doing our very best to try to make it work for families and students. Important, parents, that is huge. Having a child in quarantine can happen to anyone, instructional delivery will continue. May take a day for turnaround for online learning. Families should ensure they know passwords for Teams and that you can log in. So that's something for you to practice, right, make sure you know that, or your, or that your children know that. This is a quick old pandemic plan, that's the school division pandemic plan. That's a document that was made by a number of stakeholders. It serves a purpose of guidance decision-making within the school division for any pandemic situation. That was held for my time, developed by two people that included board members, central office administration, and others that are listed as part of the plan. And it's structured to align with the national provincial pandemic plans. It's not specific to a pandemic. The, it's really, what it does, serves two primary functions. It's intended to identify essential and non-essential functions in the school division. So what's essential, what has to happen, what's the core business of the school division? And what's non-essential, what are the non-core business of the school division? And then it has, if you were to go read it, it's on our website, it also has succession planning, and so in other words, if there's someone is out of commission and not able to do things, what is the succession, and then it has maybe even, of course, it goes right to the extreme, right? What happens if we had 50% of our staff out? What happens if we had set, so it gives all of the the what ifs to extreme what is in there. The final guidance decision-making at all levels, and it's a board document. Now, that's different than the reentry guide. The parent reentry guide is also on our website, it includes all parents, and I'm sure many of you have read that. It's more detailed, because it's informed by provincial guidelines. For the current pandemic, COVID-19, the provincial government made a school reentry plan that had three possible scenarios, one, two, three. The government side bought, we're going to go with scenario one, and so that's the guide that you see up on our website. Our reentry plan is based on the province's scenario one, the entry plan, and that's how we opened in, in September with near-normal operations guided by by the Alberta Health Services, Alberta Government, Alberta Education, with the entry guide. Now, that guide hasn't stayed the same since September, because there's changes that come out from Alberta Health Services, and when we do make changes, we try, I try to make it real obvious on there, highlight the changes or put the dates on and that type of thing, so that parents don't have to reread everything and say, well, what changed on here? We try to make it obvious what changed and, and send out notifications that there's been changes that come out. So the detailed reentry guide is on the website, and that you'll see that the guide follows Alberta reentry guidance, the primary strategy to identify the provincial plan, cohorting, magic protocols, masking, and distancing where possible. The case scenario one doesn't have the mandated two meters distancing, it's not possible in scenario one, but where possible, we need to be, we need to be giving it consideration. And provincial reentry requirements reach those areas or minimum standards, and a school jurisdiction may most suited application of strategies that are strategies over time. As Maury mentioned, things change over time, we get more informed over time, Alberta Health Services get more informed over time. And that's that piece. So if there's questions that will be out, what you asked, Maury, or if there's anything.
I have nowhere, nowhere in my, don't worry, my email.
No more in the email, or there's any from people on Teams or in the group?
How many cases of the school closes, like what's the highest? Is there a limit of like cases in the school?
Oh, no, and actually, interesting, because I did talk to where we, the school is feeling that there's two reasons the school could be closed, right, so Alberta Health Services might say, you know what, we need to, they might start determining for health reasons that a school needs to close. I haven't necessarily seen that happen, right? Or a school superintendent can say the, the operations of the school are so compromised that we would request, we would get permission, the deputy minister's office of education to move to scenario, a temporary movement to scenario three, is what, is what we can do as a school jurisdiction. And I discovered on Friday, as I tried to navigate possibilities as we were starting to, trends were starting to look a certain way, you know, wanted to find out what does that look like to get permission? And there's no magic number. Basically, what they said is, if you have about half your staff out, if you can make the case that your school operations are untenable, in other words, that you, and they said, there's no magic number. We say half because about that, or or really depends upon the size of the school, the number of staff, the number of students who are affected and at home, and whether or not really the delivery of learning is compromised to, so much to a degree with the, with the delivery of learning being in school as opposed to switching to a scenario three for 10 days or 12 days and 14 days, and so the province has, a superintendent has to get permission for that to happen. And you have to write a letter of rationale for, for them to give consideration for that. The other, of course, Alberta Health Services, Alberta Health Services can do whatever Alberta Health Services wants to do, right, or wants to do, whatever they deem safe for the public, right, is the best way to put that, and so certainly they, they make decisions about health, and we just follow those decisions. And these words about you, Gabe, there's still no video. Do we know what Andy's talking about?
Well, I've asked him if he can see our boardroom, and he says he can't. So I'm just going to turn the video off and try to call him to see if that helps.
Thank you for that. Just no, Randy, can you guys hear us?
Yes. You just can't see.
Okay. So if.
If there's five cases in the world, just goes on a line, and, and one gets cleared, negative or whatever, cleared back to attend, then do you go off-watch that?
Oh, sure, you got to see the Maury question. I'm not, I'm not going to tell them, but, so we know that, okay, so one case is in the merge, right? And then when we have two, that's an outbreak. When we get to five, it's a watch. Now, the watch, and how long is standard watch status? I don't know, Maury, take care of that, because it looks very complicated, because of course it depends upon how long the staff, the students, the quarantine and all of that piece, right, and whether there's new cases, a certain amount of time. And so I know that the province works with us on that, but we did have a school go to watch status, this was in Churchill. And we traced the case with Communication Home, right, sort of explaining more on watch status and what, what that looks like and means, and and they'll let us know when we're off. We don't get to decide when we're off.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Yes, we've got it on the website, but it's school council piece? I think, yeah. And so, yeah, it's on the website, you can even take a look at that, right? And so, if you feel free to share it, you know, every time with the rest of your school council, and most of the information on there, of course, comes from the Alberta website. That's the division's. And if you have any questions, they can certainly give us an email, and I'll bore all the complicated ones more. All right, I think we're done with that piece, and thank you so much, Garrett, for staying and live streaming, Ms. Forrest, thank you, thank you. And